Okay, welcome to the Asheville City Council meeting for May 23rd. If everyone could just take a minute and silence your cellphones. And if anybody wants to sign up to speak on any part of the agenda, the signup is outside in the hall. And if you've already done that, great. If you decide you want to sign up to speak and we're already into the council meeting, that's fine, too. You can go out there and sign up and our Google Doc will live populate, so we'll see that you signed up. Okay, and if everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
[laughing] [inaudible]
Okay, we have two proclamations tonight. The first is the National Public Works Week, and we have our Director Greg Shuler here, along with several Public Works folks. And if you guys will all come forward, I'm going to meet you down there. All right, I'll stand over here then. Okay, I'm going to read this proclamation, and then you'll introduce everyone for us, please, and say a few words. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Asheville. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Asheville to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and the public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore I, Mayor of Asheville, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023 as National Public Works Week, and urge all citizens to join in the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, once again, I really appreciate you allowing us to come here and have these wonderful employees recognized for the hard work they do every day to make the city run, along with our partner departments. I think if time allows, I would love for them to be able to announce, to represent themselves in what they do for our community and how long they've been here. Just, I'll start. I'm Greg Shuler. I've been here for 15 and a half years, and I am your Public Works Director.
Hey, y'all. My name is Will Runley. I've been here for two years and about three days. I'm the Asset Manager for Public Works. That means my core duties are managing and interpreting data related to our physical infrastructure and using that information to make operational decisions. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Jason Ryan Ogle. I've worked here a little over two years. I work in replacing sidewalks. Thank you.
My name is Sophia Benia. I am in the Admin Division of Public Works, and I'm the Special Project Coordinator. I've been here for a little over a year now, and my duties include being an HR, or not HR, excuse me, archaic liaison communications, and I help plan events and as well as kind of support internal processes.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Bank, or Buckner now, and I am the Financial Specialist for Fleet Management, and I've been here at the city for almost 16 years.
Hi, I'm Heather Weaver. I work in stormwater, been here two and a half years. I drive dump trucks and help repair and maintain those storm drains.
How y'all doing? My name is Craig Harlan, and I'm with Sanitation, and my responsibility is a waste collection and waste disposal. And I've been here over, I don't know, about two months now.
Thank you so much. Thank you, we appreciate you coming tonight.
Thanks again for having us and allowing us to show our best and brightest here.
It's nice to put a face with all the work you give, so thank you.
Thank you.
And we have one other proclamation tonight, and that is our Pollination Celebration Month. And we've got a bunch of pollinators here. Pollinator supporters, I should say, who are here, so please come forward, everyone who's here for this item. And Sage Turner, our Beekeeper in Residence, will give the proclamation.
Check, check, yep. Okay, whereas 40% of the world's insect pollinators are at risk of extinction due to habitat loss, climate change, pesticides, and exotic invasive species. And whereas thousands of species are vital to the reproduction of nearly 90% of all wild flowering plant species, which are necessary for maintaining healthy diverse ecosystems, essential to mitigating adverse impacts of climate change. And whereas, pollination plays a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities. And whereas, the city of Asheville manages urban landscapes and public lands that include many municipal parks and greenways that may serve as pollinator habitats. And whereas, the city of Asheville provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping, which may promote habitat conservation and stewardship. Now therefore I, Sage Turner of City of Asheville, do hereby recognize Asheville as the birthplace and inaugural affiliate of Bee City USA, and proclaim the month of June 2023 as Pollination Celebration Month, and urge all people to recognize this observance.
And then, if anybody wants to say anything. And if anyone wants to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor and Members of Council. On June 26, 2012, this very body voted unanimously to approve the resolution to become the first Bee City USA in the nation. Today, there are almost 350 Bee Cities and Bee Campuses in 46 states. It all started here, in this room. Had Asheville City Council voted no 11 years ago, this urban and suburban movement to conserve our imperiled pollinators right in our own backyards would not have happened. As you know, Asheville Greenworks, sorry, I get a little chatty. Asheville Greenworks manages our local Bee City USA affiliate on behalf of the city. And we stand ready to support the city in every way possible, including advising on recommended species lists and landscaping plans for public land to bring back the pollinators and retain as much biodiversity as possible before the opportunity is forever lost. We hope you will join us for some of our Pollination Celebration events in June. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, folks, we're going to move on to the Consent Agenda, and let me just mention that we're going to remove Item P, which is a resolution reaffirming support of Asheville's LGBTQIA+ community, and that is because while we have strong consensus among council members for our strong support for the LGBTQIA+ community, we're having a little bit of not having quite consensus around the exact wording of this resolution. So we're going to give it a little more time, and I'll pull it off here. We weren't able to get that gelled up in time for tonight. So do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, and this would be without Item P, then?
I'll move.
All right, do I have a second?
Sandra, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and I've got several, we've got a few people signed up to speak. So folks who are signed up to speak, you'll have three minutes to speak. Watch the lights on the lectern. Green means go, orange means you're getting close, maybe 30 seconds out, and then red means stop. So I will call the first person who signed up to speak under consent, and that is Jonathan Wayne Scott.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Wayne Scott. I was going to speak on Items P and Q, and thank you for bringing your attention and the powers that you have to, you know, take umbrage with a North Carolina law that affects particular members of the community. And as far as Item Q goes, in support of Roy Cooper and his veto of the abortion ban here, I appreciate that act as well. I am a little bit miffed that just two months ago, this very body and many in Asheville and Buncombe County had absolutely no problem supporting the governor of Ohio, Mike DeWine, and his baseball hobby as a co-owner of the Asheville Tourist Team. And everybody knew that, you know, the governor of Ohio had just shut down abortion clinics in Cincinnati and Dayton, Ohio. And while there was great lauding of the community engagement and the wonderful things that the tourists have done, and that Brian DeWine, the son of Governor Mike DeWine, has done here in Asheville, there was really no, there was absolutely nothing said about what the governor of Ohio did to the members of the community in Dayton and Cincinnati. And it's not just this body, which is an all-female body. We have a female manager here, and of course, Brian DeWine, a Republican asking for his government handout, which was also interesting, then had to go to the Buncombe County Commissioners, and I believe that two out of the three women on that body supported funding for the Asheville Tourists and McCormick Field. Buncombe County Tourism Development Authority is headed by a woman, and I think it's 75% women. And the Asheville Chamber of Commerce, which is led by a woman, and it's a majority of women. And Julie Mayfield, our Senator, all of these women supported giving the governor of Ohio, Mike DeWine, who is an anti-abortion, you know, leader in Ohio, I mean, the governor. And nobody said anything about it whatsoever. And so I would urge you to take your fight against your oppressors face-to-face occasionally and not just when you have fans surrounding you. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Nikki Harris.
I don't see green. Okay. Thank you for the invitation today. We value your support, and we value the commitment that you have to our community as elected officials. I just want to say thank you as a constituent and somebody that's been in Asheville for a really long time. Things are hard in North Carolina right now, and the Asheville Health Center has really seen the effect of the reversal of Roe last June. Our abortion patients have increased by 189% since the reversal of Roe, which has been pretty incredible. It's pretty telling of what's going on across the Southeast. We value diversity. We value folks to be who they are and live their authentic selves, because we know that when people have access to comprehensive education, when they have access to affordable, accessible healthcare, it really is the gateway to freedom. And a good friend of mine said, "A rising tide lifts all ships," and I for one want as many ships beside me and my friends and my family as possible. So I know that, you know, I imagine politics is a work in progress, but, you know, we're in this together. I feel like we're in this together, and, you know, we'll just keep on keeping on, because, you know, everybody deserves to live the life that they want and that they deserve. And we're really proud to work for Planned Parenthood. I'm incredibly proud of our amazing staff that does the work every single day, and they really do change people's lives. I do want to introduce my colleague and my friend, Kat, who is our Health Center Manager.
And Kat is the next person signed up to speak, so Maggie, if you want to, thank you.
And I don't have a lot. Thank you, Nikki. We are staff with Planned Parenthood. We appreciate you having us here today. We've seen a lot in the last two years, and we've seen a lot even pre-Roe being overturned. So we just want to state how important North Carolina is for access, for bodily autonomy. And I know, and you all know that, that autonomy spreads beyond abortion care. It's vital for abortion care, but it spreads to gender-affirming care. It spreads to queer care. It spreads to just sexual and reproductive health in the most basic forms. So we just want to make sure that all of our community members are with us in this fight, and that we're just providing healthcare. That's what we do. Day in and day out, in the Asheville Health Center, we're providing comprehensive reproductive healthcare, which includes abortion and always should.
Thank you. Thank you. Rachel Bliss.
Good evening, Councilwomen. I'm here to speak on the Consent Item N, which deals with remodeling the city garages around town. And I am thankful that you have taken noted, that you have noted the needed work that is necessary in our garages. And I'm here to speak mainly about the handicap accessible parking in our garages. It's terribly lacking. When you consider that one in three people who are over 60 are disabled, and we only have about 24 spots in the city garage at the Civic Center. I mean, if you have the symphony playing on Saturday night, probably half the people going are 75 or older, and the first 24 spots are taken in no time. And if you happen to have a regular spot in the Civic Center parking garage, and it's taken, you're up a creek, even though you pay a monthly fee to park there. And if you end up on the seventh floor and you have to take a regular parking spot, you are, and again, up a creek, because how are you going to get down when the elevators are often broken? They sometimes put little signs up on the elevator that the elevator is out, but that doesn't help you while you're trying to find a parking spot. I think Asheville should be embarrassed about the condition of their parking garages. I understand that this is primary, a primary renovation of the garages, and hopefully there'll be a secondary part to that. But it's really necessary to be sure that the elevator is always working. It can really cause a lot of havoc for elderly and disabled people. And one of the things that need to be improved is there's an exit on Rankin Street. It used to be a person in a wheelchair or scooter could get out on that, you know, to Rankin Street. But the way it is now, the arm won't go up for the person in the wheelchair or the scooter to get out, and there's curbs on both sides of the driveway getting out. So that person's going to have to wheel their chair over to another exit, especially when the elevator's out that goes to the library, they can't use that one. But thank you, and I hope that you do make some of these repairs. We'll be speaking later at the public comment.
Okay, everyone try to be mindful of the timing, and I'm sorry about that, but that's, we got to enforce the rules. Eric Bradford.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I am Eric Bradford with Asheville Greenworks. I'm here to speak about Consent Agenda G. It's the lease for Asheville Greenworks for the property on Hardisty Lane. I wanted to just, if it was any clarifying comments or questions about it, but basically our appreciation for the city to consider going down this route with Asheville Greenworks. Our relationship is 50 years old this year. We're very grateful for that relationship. And this new tree nursery, which we are planning in partnership with the city, is to grow those trees for the repopulation of trees for the city of Asheville and for Buncombe County. Coming off of the 2019 Tree Study that we did in partnership with the city of Asheville, we noticed that we were losing trees at an alarming rate due to single-family home development. So having this new tree nursery is going to allow the city and our organization to be able to flex to get those trees into those spaces. The number that came out of the 2019 study was 2,500 trees a year would have to be installed in the city of Asheville to maintain a 50% canopy coverage. That would be $625,000 worth of trees. I wish my colleague Greg Shuler was still here from Public Works to be able to speak to just how much work that is for his department. So having this tree bank on city property is going to be a wonderful asset for the city, and this is being watched carefully by our friends in Raleigh right now with the NC Forest Service. They want us to put together a roadmap on how other cities can do this across North Carolina. How can they grow their own trees? How can they repopulate their neighborhoods? How can they push along these cost savings to their neighbors? Because it's not just an environmental benefit, but it is also to utilities. And as we all know, the neighborhoods who were affected by this, who are affected, are those under-resourced neighborhoods. Those traditionally redlined neighborhoods were just not planned. So we want to work with you to put this in process. It is a long term. It is a long term. You're going to go out and you're going to look at this space and see very small trees, but they will become large trees, and you will see them all over Asheville. So we very much appreciate it. Thank you.
We want to thank you. Thank you for this partnership.
Absolutely, Mayor, thank you.
Council, that was our last person signed up to speak under the Consent Agenda item. We have a motion and a second. Do I have any questions, comments?
The only comment I'll say is that I am thankful for the feedback we got to include live performance in our supportive resolution for LGBTQ community members. I think it's unfortunate we don't have consensus to bring it forward today. The draft has been redrafted several times since February to remove any language that might be controversial. It is in fact the most watered-down resolution in North Carolina, so I hope it's ready to come back soon and that we're ready to stand with our neighbors to use drag as expression and artistic form, but also recognize its economic impact in our community.
Okay, anybody else wishing to speak? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you for everyone, mass exodus of the staff on the Consent Agenda. We, under presentations and reports, we have none. Wow. I mean, man. Okay. Under public hearings, under Item A, I need a motion to continue this item to June 27th. Do I have a motion? Actually, I'm sorry. It says July 25th, but it's really June 27th.
I make a motion to delay or to postpone this until June 27th.
27th.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, and then moving on to Item B, a public hearing to consider approving a land use incentive grant to Commonwealth Development Corporation for 77 affordable housing units on Sweeten Creek Road. We have Sasha Vertenski to talk to us about this project yet again, but from a new point of view, a new issue with it. I think we heard it on the zoning side, and that's all I'm trying to say.
Good evening, Councilwomen. I'm Sasha Vertenski, here to talk to you about this land use incentive grant request for Fairhaven Summit. You have seen this project before as a conditional zoning, and also at the end of April for a Housing Trust Fund loan. So just a few key takeaways first. This application's on Sweeten Creek Road in South Asheville. It is a low-income housing tax credit project, so it's 100% affordable with incomes averaging between 58 and 60% of the area median income. 26% of the units will be set aside for project-based vouchers, so they're working with our local housing authority on that. The project is also bringing other benefits, including rental assistance, affordability period of 30 years, energy efficiency, universal design, and building in a non-qualified census tract. So this is a low-poverty area of our city. And this project actually qualifies for something like 39 years, but our max of our policy is 21 years. So just a few background points. The development's 77 apartments and community space. So housing represents 100% of the rentable square footage. It's on 7.43 acres on Sweeten Creek, again, and the developers estimating a taxable value after construction of $12.425 million. It was also approved for a half million dollars in Housing Trust Fund loan at your April 25th council meeting. So, as I said before, 26% of the units are planned to receive the project-based vouchers. An additional 12% of units will prioritize households participating in North Carolina's key program, which serves very low-income households with disabilities and who are in need of supportive services. And then additional rental assistance programs that will be accepted include, but maybe others, VASH vouchers, traditional housing choice vouchers, and tenant support through the local continuum of care programming. So, so this is the rental mix, and there was some discussion at one of the committees about this. So we've got a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, which is great for, you know, both families. We've got a lot of folks who need single-bedroom apartments, but also families that need larger units. There's gross rent, but then there's tenant rent. And tenant rent, on the far right, is the column you really want to keep your eye on, because that's actually how much tenants will pay. We have, and Justin Mitchell with Commonwealth Development Corporation is also here, and he can talk a little bit more about rent if we need to. This is the project location here, so you can see it's somewhere close to US 25 and Mills Gap Road. These are exterior elevations, which you have seen a couple times before. And then here's the point summary. So they get 90 points because they're at 100% affordability. 30 years affordability gets you another 10 points. 50% of the units for low-income, 20 points. 50% of the units were using rental assistance, that's another 50 points. Energy efficiency's five points, universal design, 10 points, and then the non-qualified census tract is another 10 points. So that's 195 points, but our policy really maxes out at 105 points, or 21 years. So today, there's two parcels. Their current tax value is close to $400,000, and they're paying around $1,600 a year in city taxes. That will continue throughout the entire grant period. Under the estimated tax value after the completion of $12.43 million, the annual city property tax will be approximately $50,000 a year. And so the difference between current taxes and new taxes is around $48,482 a year, which would be paid for 21 years. And that gets us to a grand total of close to $1 million, which equals $13,222 per unit. It's a per-unit subsidy. So that's one of the metrics we look at to be able to compare projects and how we're investing our city dollars. After year 21, we will get the full taxes on the site. So with the Housing Trust Fund request and the Luigi's request together, that gets us $1.518 million, or just under $20,000 a unit, so still really good value. And this project has also been funded by Buncombe County, and they're funded a little bit over $1.5 million. So city and county investment in this project is approximately equal. This project was reviewed by Housing and Community Development on April 25th with a 3 to 0 vote, and then the Policy Finance and HR Committee voted, reviewed it last week, I think that's right, a couple weeks ago, with a 3 to 0 vote as well. And so staff's recommending approval of this land use incentive grant for Commonwealth Development Corporation on Sweeten Creek Road. I'd be happy to take any questions. As I said, the developer's also here to answer questions.
I have the same question that I always do, but especially for our investment in affordable housing, is what are the kinds of questions that we ask to make sure that these neighbors will have access to renewable energy? Namely, has the developer considered putting solar panels on top? And/or positioning air conditioning units to the future, solar installation might be possible?
I think-
tax will be approximately $50,000 a year. And so the difference between current taxes and new taxes is around $48,482 a year, which would be paid for 21 years. And that gets us to a grand total of close to $1 million, which equals $13,222 per unit. It's a per-unit subsidy. So that's one of the metrics we look at to be able to compare projects and how we're investing our city dollars. After year 21, we will get the full taxes on the site. So with the housing trust fund request and the Luigi's request together, that gets us $1.518 million or just under $20,000 a unit, so still really good value. And this project has also been funded by Buckland County, and they're funded a little bit over $1.5 million. So city and county investment in this project is approximately equal. This project was reviewed by Housing and Community Development on April 25th with a 3 to 0 vote, and then the policy finance and HR committee voted, reviewed it last week, I think that's right, a couple weeks ago, with a 3 to 0 vote as well. And so staff's recommending approval of this land use incentive grant for Commonwealth Development Corporation on Sweeten Creek Road. I'd be happy to take any questions. As I said, the developer's also here to answer questions.
I have the same question that I always do, but especially for our investment in affordable housing, is what are the kinds of questions that we ask to make sure that these neighbors will have access to renewable energy? Namely, have the developer considered putting solar panels on top and/or positioning air conditioning units to the future? Solar installation might be possible.
I think, did this come up during the rezoning, I think, but if the developer wants to address it, they're here.
It did.
Yeah.
Yeah, it did. Do you want to come forward, Justin?
It's also a great reminder, when I looked at the route, the route is closest to transit is four tenths of a mile, but it's on the S3 and S6 corridor, which comes every 90 minutes on each of those corridors. And it's a good reminder that for location affordability, we need to do better for transit access in South Asheville.
Sure. So the idea of renewable energy came up at one of the previous meetings, and we were referred to somebody, I believe, in the city. It may have been the county. We've been having a lot of meetings between the two, but it was a great meeting. They are a solar, I guess, expert, and looked at the plans and thought that it would potentially be a viable option. And so the route that we are looking at is when we move forward on these projects, we have to build in a construction contingency, a cushion. And we are looking at, as we near the completion of construction, to reallocate any remaining funds to the idea of implementing solar. So it's not a guarantee, but it's something that we would love to do. And there's other incentives that are available right now, and the gentleman that we met with has worked with those as well, so it could be a very viable option.
Thank you so much for the update and for helping us understand where you are in the consideration process.
Of course.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Sure. So Justin Mitchell with Commonwealth Development Corp.
As long as he's up here, any other questions?
Sounds like a meeting with Brownie, though.
What was that?
A solar expert at the meeting, maybe Brownie.
Sorry, I don't remember the name, but...
Yeah, the chair of the county commission. Used to own a solar company.
Got it.
I would think he still does.
If I can just add one note, it's a privilege to be here. I've met with a lot of folks online a lot, and so great to be here in person. It's a time when there's probably fewer affordable housing units being created in the nation than any time in the last three decades, yet this project, Fairhaven Summit, is on schedule to close and start construction in July. And that's due in large part to the vision of the city, the action on that vision, and the dedication of financial resources and staff. Give a quick shout out to Sage and Sasha and Kevin and Jonathan, who is now, I think, with the county, and then all of the others that we have worked with. It's been really great, so congratulations to the city.
Well, and thank you all for bringing this project forward. You're kind of a poster child for every tool in our toolbox of affordable housing opportunities, and you've used them all. So see, it works. So that's very helpful to us, too, especially as we engage with other folks that are looking to build affordable housing in Asheville to have examples of how it's done, and so many units being so deeply affordable.
And another great partnership with the county.
Yes. And that's nice, too, that we've, this isn't you, but we've synced up this timing so that we're both kind of weighing in on the projects at the same time, so that's nice. Sasha made all that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, too.
This is on our public hearings agenda, so I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to close it because I have no one signed up to speak under this item. So, Counsel, do I have a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Please do.
I move to approve the land use incentive grant application for Commonwealth Development Corporation Fairhaven Summit Apartments.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. All right. Now, what everyone's been waiting for, the public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 annual operating budget. And I, this is of Taylor, but first, let me, I'm going to turn it over to the manager, but let me just say once again, thanks to counsel and staff and the community for all your hard work around this budget process. It feels like the budget takes about half our year now, which is not an exaggeration, but there have been so many work sessions, so many participants in the online survey, such hard work from staff, and we have had a lot of opportunities for folks, even had an earlier opportunity that we added, even though it's not statutorily required for a hearing in this chamber on the budget. But tonight is the official public hearing on the budget. So Ms. Campbell, will you take it away?
I think you've said everything that I would like to say, Mayor. I'll turn it over to Mr. Floyd.
All right. And you'll probably hear a few more of those things from me again. So really quickly, just an overview of a few things I'm going to mention this evening. Just quickly overview our budget process and kind of a summary of our budget, especially the general fund. A few more pieces of information for you all on compensation, and then we will move on to next steps and the public comment. You may remember our key takeaways. While our revenue growth has continued, especially in sales taxes, as is usually the case, our needs and requests exceed our available funding capacity. We are not recommending a property tax increase, but the FY '24 proposed budget is balanced with an unconventional use of fund balance. As a result of that use of fund balance, we have a lot, or several strategic one-time investments that we prioritize, and our other investments respond to the challenges that we see, including increasing operating costs, investing in our infrastructure, staff retention and recruitment, and of course, your priorities and community safety needs. So a brief overview of our process. As the mayor mentioned, it does take up quite a bit of our year these days. We started internally in September and worked through some identifying our cost to deliver services and some potential new investments, moved into priority setting. You all had your retreat, and we are here at the end of the decision-making portion, where we are hoping that you all, at your next meeting in June, will go to adaption, and then we will start a new fiscal year July 1st. So a quick review of some of the touchpoints we have had with you all. We've had several work sessions. Again, your council retreat in March. We did want to call out specifically the February 28th public comment that the mayor mentioned, an opportunity for the public to come and speak in front of you all, let you all know what they thought, they were interested in as you were looking at your budget and setting your priorities. We hope that that provides that opportunity. It's a little different from this opportunity, which is much later in the process, but is statutorily required. And what we heard from that public input, including from our survey, was an interest in increased investment in both community safety and emergency response, as well as investment in water production and distribution. We also asked some questions about capital investments, and what we heard was an emphasis on roads, sidewalks, and housing. Other things that we look to as we are putting together the manager's proposed budget include our guiding principles of essential service delivery, enhancing customer value, and strategic alignment. Of course, we take into account the goals that you all set, which you refined at your retreat, including equitable and affordable housing and stability, houselessness strategies, improving and expanding core services, neighborhood and climate resilience, reimagining public safety, and reparations. So a quick summary, wouldn't be a budget presentation without at least one slide of numbers. Our general fund total is $172 million. You can see the split of some of our departments, especially our larger ones there, and over to the right, the increase from our current year adopted budget to the FY '24 proposed budget. And I'll just note again, as you would expect, our larger departments have the most significant increases, especially APD, which is going up $3.7 million. So moving on to compensation. Again, as you all may remember, we're recommending a variety of adjustments that we think will help us to recruit and retain employees, especially in the places where we're challenged to fill positions, which include the police department, and our recommendations will exceed the Just Economics pledged living wage rate. Those recommendations include a salary increase for all employees of 5% or 6% for sworn APD positions, increases to our night shift differential and on-call pay, an additional certification pay for APD, and a critical staffing supplement that will help us address some of those, again, hard-to-fill positions, provide a little bit of incentive, hopefully for folks to stay or come join us. On the benefit side, we're adding an additional 1% 401K match, a kind of a pilot program with APD for wellness, and then we're also going to work on an actuarial study that will help us better understand the cost of providing post-employment medical benefits. So again, wanted to provide a little additional information. I know there's been a lot of discussion around police pay, so we wanted to try to provide some greater detail on how that is going to change with this budget. So what you can see here is the base salary for a starting police officer. You can see there's that 6% increase from FY '23 to FY '24 in the base salary. And what we tried to do was, just kind of looking at employees that we have, make an estimate of like, what additional compensation might an employee, a police officer, receive in addition to that base salary? So, and again, this is just kind of some assumptions here. This is not an actual person, just an example, but if you assume that someone receives additional pays, including a bachelor's degree at 3%, has a foreign language skill, that's an additional 3%. And then kind of looking at, averaging out what most folks are receiving for overtime, that shift differential that we've talked about, as well as the callback hours, and the new wellness incentive, all of those things together are that additional compensation line, so you can kind of see the change there. So overall, the total, and again, this is just an example, for a starting officer, kind of average officer, if you will, with those additional pays, the actual increase rises to about 8.3%. Few more examples here, and these two examples actually are current employees. We just tried to pick someone that we thought was representative, a current officer at step one, so early in their career. This particular employee has an associate's degree, a foreign language skill, is on the emergency response team, and then also, again, received, has received some shift differential overtime and callback hours. So again, putting that all together, you can see that base increase going up 6% plus the additional compensation, and the total there in that particular instance would be 9.4%. And again, that's just based off of how they've, hours that they have worked in this current fiscal year, and kind of trying to apply that to the changes that we've made or proposed for next fiscal year. A little bit different there, that lower part, this is a more senior officer, so kind of mid-career, step five, so at least five years as a senior officer, base pay going up. And again, slightly different, the bachelor's degree at 3%, the change to that advanced certification going up, and then again, kind of the hours that they've worked as well, including that new wellness incentive. And one thing, so, and before I go on to that, you can see that total of an 11.5% increase. One thing I do want to make note of is, you can see, I would say interestingly, that these two employees are relatively close together in that estimated amount and in the current year amount. And that's, again, can really change based off of how people work. So in general, I think some of the earlier career folks maybe get a little more of that shift differential. They, the officer in that step one at the top there is working a lot more overtime, so that's really where they're seeing a lot of that additional compensation come from. Whereas on the bottom, the senior officer is seeing a pretty significant increase from that advanced certification, as well as, again, just the other increases that we proposed. So again, those are just two more examples. Happy to answer any questions about that, but just trying to get at, what does this actually mean for real employees in our organization?
Can we go back to slide 11, I think it is? Because I want to tell a good story and a hopeful story, but it's got to be a true story. The presentation includes information, maybe actually slide 12 is what I'm looking at. It says salary increase of 5%, but the updated memo we got about our firefighters is that they're actually receiving 2.5%?
The, so current firefighters will receive 5%. This is a little bit confusing, but the way that our pay works, we have a pay structure, so the structure's going up 2.5%, and each firefighter will get, but will still get a 5% increase.
I also noticed there were some, like, crossed-out parts that we're not compensating for people while they're sleeping, but if I had to sleep during 24-hour shifts while at work, it would be a very different kind of sleep than if I was at home. And I just, something is going on here where it's like our firefighters are responding to traffic incidents and fires, and there's health issues, and the way it read, and I'm not, I don't think it was meant this way, but it kind of read like, because they don't have vacancies, it's not a big deal, kind of reads like, if you don't like it, then quit, and I don't think that's what we want. But can we get some more understanding about why we're leaving our firefighters out of the 18? Because it kind of reads as like 17. I just want to make sure we're consistent with our language around the 18 pledge rate.
So...
Is this for Taylor, or is this more of a policy?
I have no idea.
I mean, Taylor can tell us how the numbers work.
Well, we, I heard $18 an hour, but that's not true based on the information we got today.
So based on the annual salary, our firefighters are compliant with that living wage amount. That's how we like to look at it, is at that, on an annual basis, because we do have employees that work shift, that work a little bit different, fire being probably the primary example of that.
And also to clarify, the living wage rate is 2010 an hour, so we're talking about the pledge rate, which we have not yet committed to getting to the living wage rate, which the pledge rate is about. So there's a couple of things here. One is, we're clarifying that it is, in fact, $18 an hour for our firefighters.
We're not doing an hourly salary for...
It's, it's based on, we've had this discussion last year. It's based on annual salary. I mean, we can, we, at some point, we can have a discussion about whether we need to treat firefighters differently and how we do the wage calculation, but right now, it's based on an annual salary.
Correct.
And I, you know, we, I recall we had this discussion last year, maybe the year before that, on the same, on the same issue.
Yeah, I mean, given that they're also running our community responder pilot program and...
I think what I hear you saying is you don't want it to be treated as if it's on an annual salary basis. You want to look at it on an hourly basis, and...
Well, it should match. If we're going to tell the community one thing, then, like, the salary increase of 5% reads as very broad, but the information we got today is outlined as 2.5. So where, where can I help?
Well, I think what, I think what I hear you saying is, it's 5% for the annual salary.
Correct.
That is correct.
And so...
This is...
I think she's responding to the memo that we sent.
Okay. So you're concerned, so the inconsistency or not reconciling?
Yes, 5% is crossed out here, and it says 2.5. Current firefighters also move up one step, 2.5. So is that total 7.5?
They are getting a 5% increase.
Yeah, that's a different issue. That's not, that's not the annual salary calculation, but I hear what you're saying about that being confusing.
It also crossed out, says indeed, the city does compensate fires for sleep time during their shifts. And this has been, you know, an annual conversation about what it means to be able to work 24-hour shifts. We don't want to have to try to fill evening shifts. We need people to be around the clock.
Right.
But I'm hearing there's concern from our firefighters' union, and I would like just to be able to better understand why that's crossed out.
Sure. Obviously, the firefighters work a different schedule. They have a different total pay plan. We made some mistakes in terms of calculating the minimum, I believe, salary. I think we had 47. It should have been 46. The other correction was, and I got this comment back from our fire chief, who said that that sentence about, we indeed pay our firefighters for sleep time, was, he used the term inflammatory, and so I agreed to strike that out. And then the next change was kind of a convoluted thing that we said blended into 1%, and that was, that was inaccurate. So we took that information out. Those other changes, the 2.5, again, relates to that minimum, starting, if someone started here tomorrow, they will get a 5% increase. Every firefighter will get a 5% increase in their salary. Okay? Thank you. Again, because of those steps, it was confusing to me, but I think we've corrected it, and if we have some information, if you need further clarification.
I think a little before the vote, I'm going to marinate with this one to make sure that I don't have other questions. I guess the other curiosity I had is around the part that says, and other hard-to-fill positions. And early on, it was like, we have a lot of vacancies in public works, and we just saw our staff up here. It seems like, you know, at the same time that we're seeing the huge amount of vacancies in public work, so we would also explicitly name that we understand... so we would also explicitly name that we understand that their department is also suffering and struggling to recruit and retain people.
Yep. And I think I made note of that in our, in that response related to the Firefighters Association memo.
Can we go back to Slide 15, please? I really appreciate this example. It arises a little concern in me that the only way our officers can really afford to live in this city is to do a lot of overtime. I'm just flagging that as an ongoing concern. I'm not saying it's just them, it's across departments. Living wages are going up, our housing prices are skyrocketing. It's not that we're not doing the best we can here, I'm not saying that. But it's just a concern that, you know, you really, you have to have two jobs in the city, or you have to work overtime. It's a, it just seems to be more and more common. And I'm bringing this up because this year, we're going to be taking on opening up our housing initiatives, our housing plans, our housing incentives, and I wonder if we want to keep this in mind, that you could be a senior officer and really not be able to work as much on-call or overtime and still be at that same pay. And, I mean, that just doesn't translate in this city to being able to buy a house anymore, is what I want to point out. And it's just, you know, I want to share that as a sentiment, I think we care about that. So when we look at our housing initiatives, maybe we can target some of this.
Are you saying in terms of like the benchmark for income?
Yeah, because, I mean, I would love that that base salary be that 69, and we just can't. But, you know, you really have to, it's not just in this department, it's in the public works departments. You know, it's why we're doing the best we can towards the new living wage, but not all the way, because we can't. But we have to recognize it's the other half of this, the housing crisis too. So I just wanted to make that connection.
And if I could, Mayor, it really is a process, because if you all recall, this would be the second year that you have given a 5% base increase. Generally, we've been creeping at 2.5%. And so I think you ought to give yourself credit. Also, when we implemented the compensation study, that plan, I mean, there was like eight, almost $8 million for compensation. So although we are behind, we have made significant strides.
Absolutely.
Because you all were willing to invest in your employees. Yes, we've got a lot more to do and further to go. But incrementally, you're doing something really good every year.
We are, and we just, you know, we can't always, we can control this lever, we can't control the housing market as much as we'd like. But when it comes to incentives and intentions, maybe we can. Yeah, we can keep doing better, keep doing more.
Do you know, in these examples, which I think are helpful to illustrate, but how much, do you have any idea how much overtime was made as an assumption? If you don't, that's fine, I just was curious.
Yeah, okay, off the top of my head, certainly don't.
The issue of overtime has come up because, for two reasons. One, if someone's working a lot of overtime and not spending time with their family and in their community, they may get burnout and really start looking for another job. So I'm looking at other cities to say, if, like Baltimore is an example, where if folks are working a lot of overtime, they may leave. And we don't want people to leave, we want to be able to retain our good staff. So I guess my curiosity is if we're just focusing on overtime to get people the pay that they need, we may be burning people out and burning ourselves out too.
So I think what this slide was trying to illustrate is, there is a range of ways that APD officers can increase their salary. Education, second language, there are a number of incentives, the advanced certification, if you are a senior officer. But also, and I think, you know, we kind of looked over this, the wellness incentive, and I don't know if you all saw the article, it was in the newspaper, in the media. You know, we are in the cutting edge in terms of that wellness coach and coaching, because we are very concerned about our employees working overtime and having to be away. But also, just the job of being a law enforcement officer creates a tremendous amount of stress and anxiety. And so this coach is to help us, help our employees, particularly in community safety, and APD in particular, their wellbeing, their overall wellbeing. We hope will be improved and enhanced with this effort, and we're going to encourage you by saying, we'll give you a little more money if you go through this program.
There's a second part that I'm concerned about in this. As we've been having the conversation about wages through this budget cycle, the idea that we can't do more. We haven't looked at doing a flat rate increase. We've looked at doing a cost-of-living adjustment, because the way I remember it being said was, it's easier. But I guess what our community is looking at us to do is not what's easier, but what's better. And that's why I hope that at the Policy and Finance Committee and Human Resources Committee, we can look at, what would it take to onboard us with six-month increases? And when will we come back and look and see, is suggesting that people work more going to end up actually, in the long haul, making retention harder?
And I would say, it is easier for us to retain and recruit employees at all levels in this, rather than kind of what, sometimes, again, when we talk to you all about compression, that's really the challenge that we have, is not that we don't want to bring that bottom up, but the challenge is, if we do that, and then, you know, folks are really close to their supervisors or their supervisor supervisors, then it gets really challenging for us to recruit in those next level up, or two levels up, or on and on, in those positions in the organization. So we're just really trying to look at it holistically, and make sure that we're able to do that.
Holistic may be a percentage increase, but 5% increase of a $200,000 salary is a lot more than a $50,000 salary. So I just think there's probably a different way to look at this that gets us beyond can't.
Well, we're going to have an opportunity to talk more about those policy goals at our upcoming conclusion of our retreat, if you will, at our work session. So that would be our opportunity to get consensus around approaching this differently. We know it's going to happen every year in terms of addressing wages paid to public employees, to city employees. So I think that would be a good time for us to get some consensus and give direction in terms of what our expectations are for the next budget cycle, which seems like it starts pretty much two minutes after this one finishes. So, anyway, I'm hopeful for that opportunity to happen. I, you know, I'm glad that we have a community that supports trying to pay our employees better, and people see the need for that. I think generally, there's a lot of support for that. You know, I'm married to a school teacher, and, you know, and the state legislature's proposing a 2.5% raise for teachers this year across the entire state, and that's, you know, obviously terrible. And, you know, so I think we're trying to maximize what we're able to do within the means that we have. And, you know, maybe the next conversation is around, how do we get more means? And that does involve raising taxes, or reprioritizing things, or reallocating things. And we've been having that conversation throughout this budget process, and here's where we are. Well, and I would just point out, the difference in the state level appears that they have the money, they're just not going to do it, which is a different, a different issue entirely. Any other questions? We do have a couple of people signed up to speak under this public hearing.
And Mayor, we just had maybe one more, one more slide, just to close this, I have to make sure people understood the...
Right. Just, just again, to kind of wrap up, we're here at the Budget Public Hearing. The next, your next meeting, June 13th, we will be looking to adopt the budget. Again, just going to wrap up with our key takeaways, revenue growth continues, no property tax increase, but unconventional fund balance use, strategic one-time investments, and other investments in responding to operating costs, infrastructure needs, staff retention recruitment, your priorities, and community safety.
Okay, we have a couple of folks signed up to speak under the Budget Public Hearing. Again, folks signed up to speak, you'll have three minutes, and you'll see the lights on the lectern. And just to emphasize again, this is the official public hearing on the budget. We don't vote on it tonight, as Taylor already said, but we will vote on it the next meeting. Okay, the first person signed up to speak is Suzy Watts. No, Suzy Watts. Okay, Vicki Meath.
Our only public comment. Our only public comment.
Hi, my name is Vicki Meath. I live in West Asheville, and I'm the Director of Just Economics. I plan to highlight a few appreciations included in this budget, as well as name some aspects of the budget we want to advocate for the city to do more or better. First off, I want to appreciate the financial contribution and the commitment the city is making to a study and to work with the county to improve transit. Just Economics is part of ARTC, a coalition of advocacy groups and stakeholders in transit that has been advocating for this type of collaboration for some time, and the city's commitments are truly appreciated. In regard to transit, I hope the city, that moving forward, the city will restore funding for expanding evening service hours and increasing transit frequency to South Asheville. While we understand the budgetary issues and the challenges to implementing those changes, I want to remind you that those changes were part of the Transit Master Plan that was approved in 2018, and these are changes that are desperately needed for transit riders and cannot wait another five years for implementation. I also want to comment on wages in the budget. While I appreciate the conversation around wages and the city's plan to reach the Just Economics Living Wage pledged employer rate of $18 an hour, I wanted to name that the living wage rate in Buncombe County is $20.10 an hour, and this is the first year since 2007 that the city will not include the Just Economics Living Wage rate for your staff in the upcoming budget. I understand the city's challenges with keeping up with a living wage rate that has gone up significantly over the past four years. But I also want to remind you that Just Economics rate is based on the cost of housing, which is increasing significantly for workers in this community, including those who work for the city of Asheville. Every year, we talk about the challenges with the budget and with compression, and I would like to, again, suggest, just as kind of Kim had identified, the cost of living increase does not need to be based on a percentage. So for example, a 5% increase for someone making $100,000 is $5,000 a year, while a 5% increase for someone making $40,000 is $2,000 a year, while the effects of inflation and the costs of things like eggs and bread and gas are going up similarly for everyone. And so, you know, if there are other opportunities for thinking creatively about how raises are given, you know, thinking about things like capping raises above the median income at the city, 5% of the median income, I'll send you an email about some suggested ways, and I hope that you'll continue to look at that moving forward. I know budgeting is hard work and tough decisions. And again, I want to appreciate your dedication to this budget process, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Just double checking. Okay, I don't have anyone else to speak under the Budget Public Hearing. And again, we're not voting on this, so I don't need questions. So we're concluded with our public hearings, and that actually concludes our printed agenda. I do have some folks signed up to speak under unfinished business. And again, you'll have three minutes to speak, and the first person signed up to speak is Jonathan Wayne Scott.
I think it's actually informal about unfinished business.
I'm sorry, I, it's, I won't tell you what's on my screen, but anyway, yes, you're right. Well, it says unfinished business, then it says maybe, anyway, whatever.
Well, all right. Speaking of unfinished business, as I was saying earlier, I was thanking you for using your power of the mayorship and city councilship to admonish the North Carolina Legislature about its pending legislation. And of course, I would like you to do the same thing in regards to the 1900s Disenfranchisement Act, the literacy test, that is still part of the North Carolina State Constitution, which is not effectual, but still exists and should be removed. So I would like you, again, to do that. And I've been bringing in a lot of lessons about history and all the stuff that I've learned about our white supremacist history here in Asheville. And recently, what I just learned, this is going to be fascinating, I think, to you, Esther, is that in 1934, the year after Hitler took power, a whole bunch of Nazi lawyers came to America to study race law, because the United States had more race laws than anywhere else in the whole world. It wasn't just black people, but the Nazis took particular interest in our Jim Crow policies and laws, because, again, they were steeped in white supremacy. And some of those laws originated here, in Asheville, from our very own white supremacist city attorney, not Brad Brown, Lock Craig, back in the day. And so, the fact that the Jim Crow laws then informed and inspired and justified the Nuremberg laws, which were invalidated and nullified in 1945, you know, I think that your position here in 2023, 123 years after this disenfranchisement act was put into place, that you're in a position to act. And I think that you have a moral imperative to do something about that, or say something about that, along with, of course, our at-large election system, which was developed in 1931. I mean, it's like right before Hitler was taking power. I see those headlines in the papers that I read on newspapers.com, you know, from back in the day. So I'm just simply asking you and everybody else to join me on the right side of history and disavow white supremacist policies that, you know, still are alive today. And, you know, I won't bite you when you get here, the right side of history has fantastic snacks, and everybody is invited, and I look forward to talking with you more about it in the future. I'll bring more newspaper clips from Asheville Citizen Clans paper back in the, you know, 19, early 1900s, and, you know, hopefully entertain and inform and, you know, do some things together, you know? Not asking you to go to brunch, you know, or anything like that, but, you know, that's reserved for Maggie one of these days.
Thank you. Diana Gordon.
Good evening, City Council. I appreciate your listening to me. I have a petition to approve handicap parking in downtown Asheville, public garages. I rent a space in one, and it has been interesting, to say the least. I was stuck on the roof, my truck was, and I was down below, and the elevator did not work for the millionth time. And I had to hitchhike, at 72 years old, up to my truck. Anyhow, we, the drivers with and without disabilities, who cherish living and visiting in downtown Asheville, demand improvements in handicap parking. Aware of the requirements dictated by the American Disability Act, ADA, we drivers demand that the following improvements be implemented promptly in order to protect us and others who depend on handicap parking in the city garage. Handicap parking spots must be located at the entrance and exits on the floor near the streets, as well as near the elevators. They are not. All handicap parking spots need to include wider stalls required for wheelchairs, walkers, scooters to be adequately removed and loaded and unloaded from vehicles. They are not. In fact, there are no center aisles in between them, which is mandatory. Another elevator needs to be added to the Civic Center Garage as a backup, where the current elevator is out of order, which happens often, I know. Signage and phone numbers for assistance needs to be installed in the elevators and at all entrances and exits. It is not. Surveillance must be installed for the safety of all drivers who use the garage. It is dangerous in there, at night especially. I can, I can tell you that. And I went to the businesses, and mostly it's businesses that signed this. And they also, I have 232 signatures. I am handicapped, I have trouble walking. Sometimes I can do pretty well, other times I can't. I also, they also added 117 employees to that. So there is a total of 350 people that are involved in this, from the businesses. I spent four days walking. I went from Patton Avenue... I went from Pat, from Patton Avenue to my, where I live, near the parking garage, over to Lexington Avenue, doing all the stores that were open. Everybody was willing to do something except for six people. That was it. All of them signed. This is bad.
Ms. Gordon, will you, before you go, sit with our two assistant city managers down there, Rachel Wood and Ben Woody, and provide them with the information you just gave us?
I gave, I, I have.
Oh, you have it, okay, thank you.
I gave you one.
Thank you.
Even better, thank you.
Is there anybody I can speak to after that? No, I'd like to.
If you would go give them your contact information so we can facilitate that, that would be very helpful.
Okay, thank you. After the, the whole thing.
You can do it right now, you can go, you can go talk to them right now. We have one other person signed up to speak under public comment, and that is Nina Tovish.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I rise this evening actually to bring another perspective about the experience of downtown. I had the great pleasure of hosting a friend of four decades who I hadn't seen in almost a decade, a couple of weeks ago. She came to visit me, she currently lives in Australia and she was in the U.S. to attend a family wedding. She and I were roommates at one point in Cambridge, Massachusetts. So I promised her I would show her our town. And we spent some time on the parkway, taking in the beautiful scenery. But we spent most of our time walking around downtown, having a great meal, visiting galleries, soaking up the buskers and in general, walking and talking and enjoying everything that our city has to offer downtown. I parked in a parking garage, I think it was, it wasn't Rankin, I don't remember which one it was. But I was very curious and I intentionally gave her as broad a view as possible of our town. And I was listening to hear whether she would have anything negative to say about what she saw and who she encountered. And I'm pleased to tell you that we had a fantastic time and that there was only one comment that she made over the course of, oh, easily ten hours that we spent downtown. And that was, as we were leaving the parking garage, we went down a stairwell and she sort of sniffed and said, not so fresh in here, is it? And I had to agree. But other than that, her experience visiting Asheville was one of cultural excellence, of diversity of experiences, of great weather, welcoming people, fantastic food, and I like to think, good company. I offer this to you because there is a narrative that's going around now that we're gonna somehow lose tourism because of the terrible conditions of our downtown. I know what I'm telling you is merely an anecdote, but it's an extremely positive one. People are coming here, they're really enjoying their time here. And if my friend is any example, they're not going away bad-mouthing their experience in Asheville, quite the contrary. So let's all take a deep breath and be proud of what Asheville has to offer to its residents and to visitors.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, Council, that was the last person signed up to speak. And I don't think we have a closed session. This feels so bizarre to finish at this early hour.
I know.
Let's go. Yes.
All right.
I know what you said.
Well, thank you.
All right, we are adjourned for the evening.